I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes the high school field trip, the donation of $1,000 to San Diego School from ExxonMobil, the resignation for retirement of Kim Jones, the resignation for retirement of Martin Swan Hall, the resignation of Jane Rosalando, and of course, John M. Turcure.
So move on.
All right. Dan Crusan will be in for us. Any discussion? A question on your floor?
Actually, we'd like to hopefully thank ExxonMobil, I guess more broadly, Alliance Energy, the donations came, donations came from in regards to San Diego School. It's very thoughtful and very, and obviously very grateful, but we really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. I'll give us some paper. I opposed, which we pass this to you. Next on the agenda is public participation. During public participation, the Board welcomes commentary from the public. We request that speakers be respectful, refrain from referencing specific persons, avoid repetition of comments made by other speakers, and limit comments to less than three minutes. The Board of Education does not discuss personnel items to public, including, including complaints against any employee of the Board of Education, regardless of whether or not the employee is referenced by name or any other identifiable attribute. If you desire more information or answers to specific questions, please complete the citizen's request for information form located on the table. The first public participation will be confined to agenda items only. The second public participation will be for agenda items as well as issues public wishes the Board to consider in the future. Anybody like to progress the board's public participation? So move on. To reports. So I have the chair report, just an update on the superintendent search. We're nearing the end of the process. And you can see that on the agenda with our discussion regarding possible contract terms for the purpose. So the head of head of principal search, Dan Crusan, will be helping out with the principal search. I attended a school start time meeting at Cade this past week, and Philip O'Donnell from Wilton High School, I don't know if you know that name, Dr. Rodriguez, but he was there to talk about the school start times in Wilton and how they implemented that many years ago, long before Newtown about doing it. And it was a really good discussion, where a lot of people in the Cade offices talked about how they wanted to implement school start time changes in their district. I want to thank Dan Crusan for responding to the many emails that we've had this week. I really appreciate all of the responses that we've made and poured. And then Thursday, this Thursday, February 22nd, the Board of Finance will be reviewing the Board of Education budget at the Lubets and Council chambers. Thank you, Dr. Fu.
Thank you, Dr. Fu. Last week, at Unified Sports Media in NYA, I had the pleasure of presenting Kathy Davey, P.E. teacher at the high school, with an award on behalf of the Unified Sports and Special Olympics as our meantime coach, and having continued to develop what we know as a model program at the high school, and now moving this same program, this same energy to the middle school. In March, I will also be meeting with the CEO of Special Olympics and the director of Unified Sports to discuss what other areas we believe will strengthen the relationship we have with these organizations and to continue to expand the benefits of these programs across our district. So I want to congratulate Kathy Davey again. I know athletics and discussions around funding equitability became a large part of our many budget deliberations, including a review or the thinking around doing a review of the entire athletic program and how that would help us make more informed decisions in the future regarding needs and spending and equitability. And this evening, we'll hear from our athletic director, Matt Namolio, on that topic. As you know, there are multiple people stepping forward out in Newtown and reaching out to help those in Parkland, Florida. I reached out to the superintendent, as I said I would, and also sent the other day a wreath of friendship from the district to share our thoughts and prayers with our colleagues there. And after discussions with the high school leadership, just this morning and yesterday as well, we are working on plans for a vigil to be held at the high school on Friday, February 23rd at 6:00 PM, in honoring the victims of Parkland, Florida. This is sponsored by the student-run Junior Newtown Action Alliance and Mr. Saladin, who is a social studies teacher at the high school and their advisor. There were a variety of logistical issues that needed to be worked out, none of which had been addressed previously, but the principal, David Roach, and I, in working with the leadership team and the teacher advisor throughout, will work again throughout the remainder of the week to prepare. They will most likely use the track rather than the turf field, and I think this will just be a really wonderful event. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any comments or questions on this? Do you have any?
Dr. Rodriguez, have you been, with regard to the vigil, have you been in touch with the chief of?
Yes, I have. And Mark Ponciano, who will really take the security issues and work through that, because I'm sure there will be some. We're also, I did speak with you there, there on that as well.
I just wanted to thank you for working through that. I know that there's a lot of logistics, but also a lot of thought that needs to go behind something like this, but I appreciate you working with the students, because I feel like it's critical for them to feel like they have a voice. So I appreciate, you know, all the work that you and your inventory to put into getting that in the right practice.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Many reports did we have?
Yes. See and I met, and the Project Challenge team met with us, well, not the whole team, but Chair Yaron and Maury Paul from Special Ed, to update us on the fabulous progress that that particular initiative is accomplishing and have been involved in it for many years. I can assure you all that we're in very good hands with the progress that's being made. One of the more beautiful things that I heard is that they have now tapped into eight third graders, but the program is four through eight. So they've identified eight third graders that need their services. So that part is great. And the other part that's so vital, that they're working so very hard at, is the affective part of these children. And that's, that is key. It's very key. So it's all, it's all moving very well. Jean Daboll is also very pleased with the work that they're, that they're doing, because they are truly a team. They work very effectively together, and the staff and all the buildings that they're in have identified that, which is great.
Are there any other meetings of just G.A.'s on? Do they have books? We have, we're missing, oh.
Yeah. This past Friday, high school students in band orchestra and chamber choir traveled to Reed Intermediate School during the school day. High school students performed songs they had been learning in their respective music classes for Reed students, talked about the music program at the high school, and some even invited the Reed students to perform with them. The date for the annual Day of Silence has been set for Wednesday, April 25th. This annual event at the high school is sponsored by the NHS Gastric Alliance. Students sign up and take a vow of silence for the day. This symbolizes their support of LGBTQ individuals and raises awareness about how these individuals' voices are sometimes silenced. This past Wednesday, the high school celebrated Valentine's Day in a variety of ways. The Greenery Program and its students sold carnations for the full duration of the day, with sales including single flowers, half dozens, dozens, and full two dozen bookcase. In addition, Best Buddies celebrated their annual Valentine's Day dance this past Saturday in the high school's cafeteria. Attendees of the semi-formal event brought food to be shared with everyone, all while spreading the love and celebration of the holiday. Signups are underway for this year's upcoming Catalyst SAT Food Camp. The informational and educational seminars will occur on the weekend of March 10 and 11, and they aim to give students the insight and confidence needed for the day of the test. The program also leaves students with independent study materials to practice right up until the day of the test. The winter season of nightmarke athletics continues to wrap up as we approach the end of February. C.E. nights have been held for multiple teams, including boys' swim and dive and boys' basketball. Also, this past Wednesday, saw a unified basketball tournament at the NYA that hosted Team of Kirkfield and our very own Newtown Blue Plays Unified Team. Many families, friends, and fans came to watch the tournament, which also drew support from NHS cheerleaders and Mr. Edwards as an announcer, which simply added to the energy and excitement that always comes with these unified events. Coming out of February break, the high school and its students look to continue that same gear, energy, and spirit throughout the duration of the year.
Thank you. Any questions? I heard that performance at Reed School was, was a success, and ExxonMobil was very much enthusiastic about high school students.
I wasn't there myself, but I heard really good things about it there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the financial report. I will entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the month ending January 31st, 2018. Second, Mr. Crusan, second.
Yes, thank you. This is the seventh report of the school year, and things have improved since the last financial report, where I had predicted that it would be about $72,000 in credit. There are a number of briefings, wide list turned around. We also have some more information from the state regarding the excess cost grant that is, is coming to Newtown schools. Let me talk about that first, the anticipated obligation revenue was listed in other revenues that you took at the end of the report. What the state had indicated is that they are expecting that they pay 73% rather than 75%. So that 73% results in about $42,500 reduction in the grant that was predicted the last month. This process is subject to change. Again, the first payment should come in by the end of this month, February, and then the final payment will come here in May. So until the end of May, it's very difficult to find a regular payment, but they said that, you know, 73% or something like that. In other areas of the financial report, the salaries, it looks like we're really doing well in the home bound, with two of their salaries. The estimate there of the remaining balance has bumped up quite a bit since last month. Also, certified substitute seems to be a lot less this year compared to the same time period last year, so cautiously putting forward outside of $1,000. And the non-certified salaries, those have turned around dramatically since we received the transfer of operating funds for the ASO program. That money was physically available to us January 3rd. That was $313,236 that went to both the non-certified salary lines and to the employee benefits line for the Medicare and FICO, for the school security, for our insurance. In the benefits area, we have that transfer that we need. We also received a check for our workers' comp audit, which occurred back in September, and that was about $4,500, it was about $5,000 that was credited to us because our estimates on what the workers' comp payments were going to be was higher than what they audited to be when they reviewed our final payrolls for the 16th and 17th of this quarter. Also, in the unemployment area, we received a big credit from the State Department for some claims that apparently were contested by other employees. I don't know the details behind it, but they reversed the charges that were made to us to tune up by $6,000. So that will reduce the balance in the unemployment. Most of the other accounts are very similar to the last one. We have had a turnaround in the energy accounts. Electricity was previously predicted to be in a shortage situation. Now it looks like it'll probably break even. And part of that is due to the solar installation upgrade and reduced energy consumption there, because this is the first year we didn't know exactly what it was going to save us. So that's looking good. And natural gas, also, natural gas is not, price has not decreased as much as we expected it to increase in our system, seeing the efficiency there, so we're looking at a balanced net account as well. And just another point on the fuel for vehicles, I had spoken since the beginning of the year about the loss of the alternative fuel energy credit for green vehicles. And I received a late word last week that with the budget that was signed by the president, that there was a reinstatement of the alternative fuels credit only for 2017. So we'll be able to get at least September through December, we could apply for a new credit, and that is 50 cents a gallon. So that would amount to about $8,000 to $9,000 if we applied. But we don't know what the credit application process is going to be or how long it's going to take. But that's, that's certainly good news, which we continue for subsequent years. Everything else is, is predicted at, at budget. So I don't have anything else that I think I need to highlight here. I can give you some details in the narrative report here of what's happening in various accounts. If you have any questions at this time.
Questions? Mr. Fu.
All right, the questions on this topic here that were possibly, have been, you know, I appreciate your updates in regards to tax, but so hopefully, you know, the application process isn't a bad for you. Even though it's smaller, it will be a count, so it might be a little bit of a process happening. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? What's on the motion? They were accepting the financial report. I opposed, extension, but that's as you mentioned. We'll move on to the minutes of previous meetings. So we have four. I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of February 6th, 2018. Mr. Crusan, any discussion on that? So all those in favor? I, any opposed? John, Eric Stein? And I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of February 13th, 2018. Second, Mr. Crusan, any questions? Just like seconds, the motion, any discussion, consideration? Okay, so all those in favor? I, any opposed? Okay, and Mr. Fu is in.
I am. I wasn't.
You were, you were there.
I was.
All right, so that happens. And then move on to our athletic program, self-study. No, sorry. Just help us introduce.
Absolutely. So as I mentioned earlier, Matt Bentley has worked to shape his vision for an athletic program, internal studying. We have discussed together the framework for this and the timeline moving forward. I am confident that this work, which will include key stakeholders in the process, will have a very positive impact on the use of resources and the equitability of this across an entire program. This will certainly impact on a positive way coaches, athletes, and the community at large. So Matt, we got further lead, Monica.
Yeah, so like Laurie mentioned, obviously, being new in this role, understood pretty quickly that there's a lot of interest out in athletics and a lot of, for mine, a lot of moving parts, a lot of questions. And I think, to be honest with you, that's a pretty good thing. So what Laurie and I and Dave Roach had spoke about, we're just putting together a self-study, and this is in its absolute infancy stages, and it was more coming off our budget conversations to move forward and not let this be forgotten until next year picks up and we kind of could converse again and have all the same things occur. So what we were going to do is coordinate this beginning now, and we literally started talking about this last week, so we don't have every little detail nailed down, but what we do have is just a group that we're going to coordinate together. And what we're going to try to do is achieve a certain number of goals, which we put here, but the basic mission is hopefully this morphs itself into a three-year plan, so we could show the strengths, we could show what we do on a daily basis, we could show everyone the, you know, over 100 coaches and close to 1,000 student athletes that we do have, and what we're all about. So we want to look for the, we want to show off what positives are, we want to review areas we need and work out, like you said, equitable support across the board. And then with this, if you look to the bottom, the goal that, that we will have is to present to all of you what we believe will be the best way to go about the pay and participate structure for what will end up being the 1920s. So I wanted to keep you all abreast of what was happening, and if you have any questions about this, maybe we'll happy to take them, just to let you know what we're doing.
And I just wanted to add that while you see three goals here, I don't know if you want to go through, you mentioned one, there are three larger goals, but a lot of this is more of a framework coming in, so they're not starting from scratch, things that, you know, we've noticed over the years and things that I talked about. Part of this is the key stakeholders and their voices in this will be critically important as well.
I can't thank you enough, because I've been involved with the, with this for far too many years. So this, for me, is personally fabulous. I have a request. Student athlete rep, it's just one?
We started with, yeah, we started with it would be one.
And how, how, because that voice is key. Is that going to be, have you decided on what sport or what year that rep is going to be chosen from, and how are you choosing?
As of right now, I have no, we have not chosen yet, but, but I feel like feedback from various teachers and coaches and people who would be a good fit on this. And again, whether it's one, you know, whether we have another one, again, that's not, hasn't been set in stone, but it's obviously, like you said, it's a huge, huge component.
Huge. I have one good thing to say. Me personally, I would select two. One would be male, one would be female. That's just me personally saying that.
Any other comments or questions?
Matt, will there be a number of the Board of City Council? We were going to just keep it to teachers, coaches, and student athletes. And here.
Any other questions, Mr. Fu?
So if I were to request, is not going to be implemented next year, the goal is for the balance to be?
Right, correct, because after our budget, after we decided to freeze, you mean the pay and participate part of it?
And for any.
Right, I think, and again.
I mean, are you, is there a deal in committee to accomplish one goal, three or four goals?
Yeah, I do, I really do. I feel like, I feel like starting it now, in having the right people on the committee, I definitely feel like there will be things that we'll be able to accomplish yet for next year. This will be something that we will start, and depending on, again, how it kind of molds itself and which direction we're going, I think will depend on, that will show how long it will take to kind of accomplish the whole thing, but I definitely say that we will be able to accomplish some of this, so that will be, yeah, be able to see in the next year.
Great. Just one other thing, is there any way to get periodic, no board members included, is there any way to get periodic updates of how it's going? Maybe if that brings.
Yeah, absolutely. I would be more than happy to just keep you updated and let you all know how, how it's going along, what's exactly happening, what's being accomplished, what's been, depending on which, you know, how periodically we do need to be.
Great. Maybe something like quarterly or.
Yeah, I have no problem. Right. And if I'm here myself, give you your, you know, your first, second, or third.
Any other questions, certain comments?
I have, oh, I have additional. I would, this is a huge request, because I know how nearly impossible it is, but if you could look at what, what you view equity to mean, I think that's hard. And I think we've struggled with that in the board over the years, what is it, being equitable? So that's one request. And then the other piece is, I, it just occurred to me this year, that we've been phasing out, or the plan was to phase out pay play with the next five, four years now. But at the same time, we have just added several new, we keep adding new sports to the program. How, how do you envision that all taking place while we're phasing out pay play, we're also taking on more sports? How do we phase in the funding of the new sports that we take on? I know you don't think the answer is always to, but that's just something that I, I think is.
I think, now, I don't know if I'm saying, but I thought with the phase out, we had a freeze on that phase out, so that right now it's going to continue. And I think that, like you said, you really said it. I mean, the goal, my goal, the community, our kids, we want to, we want to include opportunities, I think if I'm not mistaken, and that is the hardest part, to include all the opportunities while still being physically responsible and not asking what's in the house, you know, world. It's, it's hard, really, and we're trying to include and have opportunities for a lot of kids, and that, I think, is, is the biggest question. And if you look, and this is something where I'm actually really excited about doing, because I've coached for a decent amount of time, not, not really, really long, but I've coached for a good amount of time, and there's so many things in the history of this program that where different sports started, where we started from, where we came from. where we started from, where we came from, and what we have compared to what we had five, six, seven, eight years ago. So I think I'm excited about that and just to show the board who we are and so forth. I'm excited about that, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
And the first question with the equity, I think that's something too where I actually started doing this already, looking through pretty much each dollar allocated on one for what sport during the past year. And to see what, as a whole, I think a lot of people will be surprised, a lot, a lot of, not that it's a hundred percent equal across the board, but I mean, the majority of our sports do receive a similar funding across.
Mr. Clark, do you have a question or comment?
I think if I were personally to see what you're about to do with this, the hardest part for me personally would be to make sure, especially from the student athletes and then the coaches, that there would be truthful conversation going on and very honest conversation going on. And that's probably two of your hardest challenges that you, is to make sure that the students are really telling you exactly what's happening there because they will, I'm saying they will, I'm hoping they will, because of what they might be fearful of or whatever. I only say this because I've gone through it. I'm going through it. So it's difficult, it's very difficult.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
Well, this is only partially involving Matt and the purposes in regard to. Yeah, it's a serious one. I'm glad that we're, we're starting, we're starting this. I'm a little disappointed by the fact we focused on high school athletes because I feel like that leaves out some of the other concerns that we also had around budget time. And as I said, only, and I, I want to make sure that the middle school, as far as athletes are going, I want to make sure the middle school gets some consideration at some point in the discussion to make sure we're not looking at one aspect and leaving another aspect out. I don't know, are there plans to look at other extracurriculars improving but not going to margin band?
Yes, but that would be a separate.
Right, but so there are.
And certainly you can add middle school because this is the, this is the entire athletic program. And we talked a lot about high school, but certainly that's easy enough because they have much less in terms of athletics. So that's not, not an issue to add that as part of that because it really is the whole athletic program.
And the other, the other extracurriculars and stuff are.
That would be a separate self-study, that we're, we're trying to get this one off the ground first, but yes.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure those don't get left out. I understand it would be a separate study.
Yes, that's good. If he has enough on his plate.
Yeah, he has to be. I would not put that on your, on your thing. Thank you.
Alright, so move on to. I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education resolve that whereas this Board of Education at its meeting of April eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen unanimously acted on a three-part resolution for a school construction grant application for the roof replacement project at Holly Elementary School, which was forwarded for further actions of the Legislative Council, which was also unanimously affirmed at their meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. Let it be further resolved that the intent of the wording that the Board of Education be assigned the responsibility for this project was that said Board was to act as the building committee for the Holly School roof replacement project because its scope and duration was far less than what a standing town building, building committee would oversee. So, concern and stights makes the motion, Mr. Clark is on second. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry? I don't, you, you do not need to abstain from that, you're allowed to abstain from any other information or any other. Does anybody have any questions about it? Do you want further?
I guess, I understand that sometimes they ask for different things because it depends on which or who's doing it. But this is typical language that we use in previous resolutions, correct? About naming the Board of Ed as a building committee. This is not something that we haven't done in the past.
That's correct. We have allowed the Board of Education to fund it as a building committee for smaller projects. And if you look at the second page of the proposal here, it's highlighted that this was from the state. This is from the state that they were, they said, they said about this school facility in June of nineteen. They felt, they called me and said that they felt that this was the US, they weren't clear what it meant. I explained it to them on the phone, I said, well, the reviewers, you have something to write in. So they wanted a confirmation from the Board, it was clearly the intent of the Board to have a building committee for this project. Because the sample resolutions that they suggested prepare, if you look at the following page, they have one, two, and three. The underlying parts are the most critical part of each one of those resolutions. The first one was legislative body, the second one is building committee would propose, and the third one was the school name and the two, the drop, plans and specifications for the project. So we were missing the words, building committee. Step forward to the legislative council to act on the identity motion. So it's a matter of clarification, so.
So define Board of Education Building Committee.
Well, the way, the way the law works for any school building project is that they, you can create a separate building committee for any project you want. There are school districts that may have multiple building projects going on that can have two or three different building committees. And it's really our right to assign the responsibility to the Board to act as the building committee for this project or we could have forward this to the town municipal building committee. And we felt originally when I presented this motion to the Board back a year ago, we felt that it would be more expeditious to have the Board act. It's just not really a lot involved. You did approve the plans and specifications in June of last year as we reviewed by the subcommittee. And then the Board passed this motion, basically at this point, the next thing that you're going to do on this project is going to be to certify that the project's complete. So there's really no other requirement that's required. It's, hopefully, it's going to be a school, a quick project. So we could name three members, we could name three members of the public to be building with. For that, we're right to do that, but it seemed logical to have the Board be able to do this. So that would have the final purpose.
Okay, so. Who is going to be there on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to make sure that what they're doing is what they're supposed to be doing? So that in the end, we don't have confusion because it appears that every time we allow the professionals to do these things, we have a lot of confusion. So if we're going to be the committee here, then you've got to give some of us hard hats so that we can go there and make sure you're doing what you're supposed to be doing because we're going to get ourselves in trouble. The roof will leak or this will happen, and that will happen. Or someone will be pointing to someone else, well, that's not in my contract, I'm not doing that. We didn't pay for that, whatever. And if we're responsible for it, then we need to take ownership of what's going on, I think.
Well, Gina will obviously be our eyes and ears on the project. People will supervise the one that we did of high school, the high school replacement project that was launched last year. So I'm confident that we approach this project in the same manner that we have handled the project smoothly. And I think it will be a little difficult to get you up there.
No, I'm not. Um, just the next question. Who is the construction, who did they sign the contract to? It's not the same people that did the auditing, is it?
No, 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 this, this is a project manager that works with the Garland Roofing Company, which is the company that we used to do the high school restoration project.
And is it the same company that did the middle school roofing? The middle school roofing, is it the same company?
No.
No. Are you happy with who's doing it?
Up till now, yes.
Sorry, do we, so we have a project manager? I'm sorry, I just, I think just something you said there, I don't remember the person, should we hire a firm to do, who can do the work? Is there also somebody involved with actually the project manager for this?
Representative from the Garland Company is putting together the specifications for the change to the high school. Technically, you could call him Project Manager.
But it didn't say a company that's actually doing the work.
Well, they solicit, they prepared specifications and they solicit bids for companies that were certifying to deal with that particular project. And they will, they will oversee it. They're like a installer type, some installers type. That product that's specified to be placed on.
Any other questions? Let's take them, look on the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution, red?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any understanding? So motion passes unanimously. Alright, so move on to public participation. Mr. Edwards, you could still say, see, you're at the table with us, you're a member of the board. I thought maybe you were there for public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the Board? Yes. It's a little lumpy. Can we, are we, or do I need to lie? I do, you can. You can just start off with your.
Yeah. You can have it go that, right? Okay, Kathy, sixty-three, Tredorich Drive, in Connecticut. I'm here in Leslie Town High School, TSA president. I'm involved with one of our fundraisers called the Night Pod Challenge. And it's a set of indoor obstacles, minute-to-win challenges. And it goes across students of the high school. We actually have a Board of Ed team. We have a holly team and a head and adult team, teachers. Only the students running the high school are competing because we wanted to make it somewhat fair. Challenges range from inflatable obstacle course, kazoo challenge, you play kazoo, your team has to figure out which one you're playing. High terrain contest, I'm looking at a target over there, where the faculty members are targets. It's, so it's on March eleventh from noon to two P M. And we're really just trying to drive awareness because it's really, you know, about community and having the high school students compete with teachers. And hopefully we'll see a lot of kids and families from the upper school come and see us. And you can find it on Eventbrite. We're just taking donations, minimum one dollar suggestion for adults, for kids six and under. Money will go to boost the scholarship for seniors at high school as well as the teacher grant program. And we're splitting the money with students and they will get to vote on how the money will be spent for them. That's it.
And a second, you, sounds like a board.
Was it more about team?
George can help us, I don't think he'll watch. So perhaps the discussion we take up on the Board, the Board Challenge. So there are any other folks who would like to address the Board? Let's take no more public participation. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, Mr. Edwards, second to motion, all those in favor?
Aye.